Is now in session. May we stand and have our invocation by Councilwoman McPherson and the pledge.
Lord, we thank you for this evening, even as we gather to do the business of the city. Help us to have integrity, to do what's right, and, Lord, I also just ask you to please give us some relief from the drought, especially for the farmers, and it's all in your hands. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First on the agenda will be the approval of the minutes for October the 4th. Are there any corrections? That's what I'm... Let us adopt the agenda. Do we get an adoption from the general? It's been moved to second that we will adopt the agenda that is praised before us. As now we will have the approval...
You want us to adopt the agenda?
All in favor of the poses. The minutes, the agenda has been adopted.
As presented.
Thank you, ma'am. Now we have the approval of the agenda, of the minutes for October 4th meeting. Do I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
It's been moved to second. How many in favor, poses?
I was in favor.
Okay, poses none. Alright, next we'll have the council updates by the general interests and concerns. Do we have any concerns from our council?
One of the things that I've noticed here recently and the city manager is clarified...
Do I really need... One more time.
Low bitter. The one thing that has come kind of obvious in the city is the fact that our codes division do a real good job every day, but they are, they are more reactive than proactive. I'd like to see if we could work something to a point of having those folks drive the city and make cases against the codes violations rather than having somebody call them in. Would that be something we could look into, Mr. Miller?
If that's the will of the council, I mean, right now, from administrative standpoint, the code enforcement officers at this point are already pretty maxed out. If you, if you follow the city report, you see that even on the complaints that they deal with, they don't have a lot of extra time to go out and just show up. If you start to also be proactive, then, then you also will, will sort of have to balance of, well, why are you picking on me? And then, and then, and then a future council meeting will be, you know, well, why didn't Aunt Mary get picked on but not Uncle Tom? So, so we put out in every newsletter, right at the top, you know, report a concern. We try to publish and, and make it well-known that, you know, we're complaint-based. And if the council wants the administration to go another route, then, then just tell us that, you know, y'all want us to go another route and we'll go start proactively knocking on doors and if a cat moves and it's a violation of code, we'll go after it.
Maybe you can think about that for, for the next budget year, if we just kind of mull that over.
Okay, while we're on the code enforcement, about a month or two ago, we asked them to look into adding more teeth to the enforcement because we got, we got violations out there that's been there for eight months and we're unable to do anything about them.
Well, one of the things that I was asked to do is to take a look at our existing nuisance ordinance, and I am in the process of drawing up a redraft of that. Don't have it finished yet, but I hope to have it completed soon.
Okay. And what comes to mind is Thomas Dorsey, Spring Street. It stays that way.
Yeah, there's a, there's a lot that are like that because...
I know.
As you all know, we're lacking in the teeth of, of authority. The city operates with two part-time officers. We now operate on a Saturday rotation, so we always have code enforcement now on Saturdays. There's three part-timers, but as you know, 20 hours of that part-timer, the third part-timer is under contract with Temple, and then the remaining, you know, five or six or eight hours are on the city side. And then, of course, you then have to account for their time in court, so it sort of just eats. So, yeah, when you look at the, the budget and what the council really wants for its city, look at positions, hours, and staffing levels, so.
That was just the matter of concern, sorry not to be...
Oh, yeah.
Okay, alright. Okay, that clears that, now we will have our city manager's report.
Okay, well, I apologize to y'all in advance. Not a big fan of a... Hello? Hello? A PowerPoint at, for my city manager's report, but would be remiss to citizens giving everything that's before us if we didn't go a little into detail. And so I'm going to try to remember what I did last time here. Ah, there we go. Alright. So, for the council, we talked about last year about the U.S. Department of Labor's new overtime guidelines that were going to potentially go into effect. They, of course, then, when they went into effect, we informed the council they went into effect, and that we've been continually monitoring them and in the, in discussions with Georgia Municipal Association, obviously, at this point, Georgia and 20 other states have filed suit, and despite the efforts of Congress, they, they've not been able to get them to stand down. Now, the reason this is an implication on the city, but it's not just an implication on the city, this is anyone that employs workers with certain thresholds. So, you should have given to you a document, for instance, that's specific to local government and requirements, who goes into overtime regulations, et cetera. So, for, for us here at the city, there are individuals in classification criteria that is an exempt classification. Under the new guidelines, in order for an employee at a local government, and keep in mind, I'm saying local government because there are caveats, but for local government, we need to be paying those exempt folks a minimum of $47,476. So, there are, I believe, eight employees that are affected at the city. On your screen now, you'll see that those positions are the city clerk, the business operations manager, and then I think the rest of all these are in parks, recreation, leisure services, but it's the administrative manager, the recreation program manager, the events coordinator, the museum manager, the athletic manager, the senior senator, senior center manager, and the library manager.
That'd be nine.
Are there nine? Okay, thank you. Can't always count under pressure here. So, so these positions are currently exempt, but by December 1st, they either have to be kicked back to hourly, which means that they'll be in an overtime status, or we're going to have to pay them that minimum salary. If we were to bump each of those up to the minimum salary in order to be compliant with Department of Labor's rules, just on the salary side alone, that's an impact to the taxpayers of $56,952. When you include benefits, you're talking roughly $74,037. So, I need the council to sort of mull over that because we're going to have to make some administrative decisions, and since we have enough budget workshops between now and December 1st, we'll have enough time to go ahead and implement whatever is decided. Alright, the second is the drought update and the voluntary water restrictions. Right now, Villarica is a part of a larger swath that is in severe drought conditions. Right now, we are up to the most severe category. This was updated recently, and now we are in what's called the exceptional. This is not as in like exceptional, like wow, you're doing an exceptional job. This is, you're at the top and you have some issues. So, anyone that has surface water out there, ponds, lakes, creeks, et cetera, and they look at them in this swath in this quarter, which now comes down well into Villarica, it's mainly the northwest, goes over to the northeast, so the swath has been expanded. Right now, the drought conditions are anticipated to continue right on through the winter. Last year, this time, we had a very precipitous winter. In fact, we had over, I think, over 22 rain delay days just at the library alone because they'd gotten so much rain. Now, now we're in a exceptional drought. And so, last week, our head of public works, Pete Savanas, started conversations with the Georgia Environmental Protection Division because we're under what's called a level-one response. Even though we're in the worst category, exceptional, a level-one means that we need to educate everybody about the drought. So, this is why on the website, in the newsletter, on Facebook, every social media we have, there's been all of these communications because the state says we have to, although we started them well before the drought because indication showed that we were having some high water usage, and we've put all that out there, and that's all great, except no one's lowered their water usage. We had a meeting this morning, we've gone over the data, and our usage is still as high as it always has been. Folks are not pulling back their water usage. So, I hate to raise a flag, but I'm raising a flag. As you can see from this map, if, and supposedly I got a pointer, yeah, I got a pointer, let's see if I remember this. Okay, if you, if you, this doesn't help for the council, but find Fulton County, find that little kickball, and, and sort of go to the left, if you will, as if you're heading to the state line, and you're going to see that we're in the most exceptional category in that deepest, deepest of red. Mr. Mecklen, that'll be right there on your screen here. There you go. Alright. So, right now, the city is potentially weeks away from being without water. Now, I don't want to be an alarmist, y'all know that we can hit a switch and we can buy, continue to buy as much water as we need under our agreement with Carroll County, but we also have an agreement in place, at a much higher rate, we could start to buy water from WSA. I will tell you that I met with the city manager of Temple today, and they're actually in talks with potentially selling water that they buy from Carroll County, but then will sell it to Harrelson County. Buy water, sell water. That's what enterprise funds do, they make business. Well, so, so Harrelson Water, Harrison County's out of water, okay? Local governments are selling them water in order to keep. We're not in a situation where we, we can sell our water. So, as far as where the city is, as I mentioned, level-one restrictions, which requires the public water systems, educate folks. So, folks, we're out of water. We're almost out of water, okay? This is, this is serious, but it's more serious than the state will tell you. So, as your city manager, I'm telling you, this is serious, but I'm going to show you in a minute how serious it is. So, from administrative standpoint, we want more severe restrictions in order to preserve our water usage for such critical uses as bathing and food preparation, because at the last, you know, time I checked and my staff checked, they'd prefer that I bathe before I come to work. Alright. Whoops. Alright, let's get back to this. Alright, this is a little technical stuff, but basically, right now, we have reservoirs that are about 10 feet on a staff gauge. Staff gauge is basically allows you to see where we are with respect to how much water we have. Full pull on that gauge should be 13 feet based on elevation withdrawals, based on our strategy charts, meaning our historical data, we should be at basically .5 million gallons a day, or MGD, from Lake Cowans and .5 MGD from Lake Fashion. Right now, we're drawing .3 MGD from Cowans and 1.0 MGD from Lake Fashion, and as it is right now, full pull 13 feet, we're about 10 feet. Right now, we're some 20 to 25 days away until the second intake valve's out of water. But again, not to be an alarmist, there's still options, and we'll continue to show those. So, let me take you through this. This is Lake Cowans, this is our intake, okay? It's above water, alright? That's never a good thing. Think of this as a funnel, you know, if you go in, dip water, you know, water needs to go down in there. That's the intake. This is the area that you don't see. These are the mudflaps. This is where water is supposed to be. This is where water is supposed to be. This is where water is supposed to be, so bad the stumps now are starting to show. This is where the water is supposed to be. More importantly, that's where water used to be, alright? The city has experienced this before. It's been many years, but the city has experienced this before, and this is where we look at some of this historical data. So, now supposedly, if I actually did my homework, let's see, I suppose to then go over to the next lake, let me see if I'm hitting this right. Alright, let's go over to Lake Fashion. This is the intake for Lake Fashion. Now, there's, there's three reservoirs, and, and we're supposed to have gravity feed from one into the other, and then we pump, you know, into the other, and then eventually we intake it. So, there's three ground-surface reservoirs, I call them reservoirs, but they're really lakes, that we pour water into, alright? There's obviously animals, cattle, things of that nature, you know, it's, it's in the farm area, that also surround these, and they also like to take water. This is the intake. There are three valves on this intake. Right now, intake one and intake two, and it's intake two that I referenced, that we have about 20 to 25 days, but I suspect we have less than that. One option that we have, which is Public Works is going to pursue, is to actually take equipment out there and start digging around the intake to get all the way to the lowest, lowest intake possible that has not been opened in, who knows how long? I mean, it's not been open. So, we're going to try to get it open because that's very critical. That, that potentially can give us another 20 days of water supply at, at that rate. But as we pump water out of there and we go down to that third intake, the city has to be prepared now that everyone that is on these lakes is probably going to be at a future council meeting telling them, y'all are pulling this lake down way too low. We're in this for the long haul. We're going to go through winter at this rate. Every predictive, everything that's been updated, I think the most update was October 16th, I think, give or take. I may be wrong on that exact date, but all the experts are saying, we're in this for the long haul unless the council wants to learn how to do a rain dance. Alright, this is Lake Fashion. Again, Lake Fashion at the intake, these are the Lake Fashion mudflaps. This is again, the intake area. Here's the Public Works truck. Again, you can see where water used to be in order to draw water. And, alright, so, at this point, unless the council wants to push back, I mentioned that we have been doing all of this education to the public, and it's done nothing. They're still using the same amount of water. Now, I mentioned, of course, we'll, we'll dig, we'll try to get access to more water, but it's going to generate complaints. Two, we can ratch up, very much when we took our production out, we bought 100%, but you understand that that's a cash register. Carroll County will sell us as much water as we would like to purchase because it's a cash register. They understand that. From a city administrative standpoint, we should, in my opinion, immediately call for a voluntary outdoor watering ban for anyone that's actually using our water. If you're doing well water, you know, hopefully it would be nice if you would curve back because ultimately, whatever's in the ground is affecting others. But again, it would be voluntary. The second is on Friday, the government officials in the cities and the counties here in Carroll County are meeting with emergency management, and we're going to have a drought management meeting, and based on that meeting will be whether or not the city has to go to the next step. And that next step will be to go to the state and say, okay, I know we're under level-one, but we really believe that we probably ought to be under, say, level-three, where we actually do have some mandatory enforceable water restrictions. As a city, we cannot tell folks, you gotta stop using your water. We have to have the state's blessing because we have a permit with them. So, again, once we, Pete and I go to the meeting on Friday, we'll be able to follow up with the council and give you a little bit more guidance, and who knows, maybe Carroll County will give us some concessions and, and a cut rate on that water we need to buy. Let me just go to my next topic. Alright, paving, paving, this is the L-MIG. There we go. Alright, in a previous meeting, the council authorized using the 2015 and the 2016 L-MIG money with the match plus the remaining of the streets SPLUS money that was from the 2008 SPLUS for paving. That was $628,338. Anytime you use L-MIG money, which is a gas tax, for those not familiar with the acronym, but it's a local maintenance improvement grant, you have to follow GDOT standards. You have to bring up any road to GDOT standard. So, that phrase, you know, oh, there's probably not a road in, in the city of GDOT standard, well, we're going to follow the requirements because as long as you use their money, you have to. If the council doesn't want to use their money, then just simply just tell me, we send it back, and we just use local tax dollar money and SPLUS money. On that list, oh gosh, I hit the wrong button, there were 18 streets and one subdivision on the priority list, and basically, there was a priority list, and I had mentioned to the council that we were going to try to prioritize those so that as we moved the paving towards Douglas County, hopefully, we would know by the November 8th, which is, of course, anybody in the room know? Oh, Tuesday, Tuesday, yeah. So, we would know hopefully by Tuesday whether or not we would have the Douglas SPLUS passed, and that's very critical because there's money in there for paving. Based on the project conflicts, and I'll get to those in just a second, here's an updated paving list of what you can afford based on what you have authorized. There was a small section of Mirror Lake Parkway, which is from the dam to, I forget what street, but, but there's a section that has never been paved. That is a $29,485 job, so that's on the list. South Carroll Road is from 78 all the way to 61. That's the whole road. Spring Street, $54,422. Clearview Street, $55,838. Candler Street, $61,076. And then Rockmark Road, although this is a state route back in 1986, this council, not y'all, this council, the governing body, adopted that as a local road, so you're responsible for it. And that's going to cost us $231,294. Alright, the following roads are on hold until the water lines are upgraded. We have a water line replacement program, and it doesn't make sense to tear up roads, replace the water lines, if you've just paved them. So, I put them on the hold list, but here are the amounts for those. East Montgomery, $67,000 some change. West Wilshen, $67 some change. Anderson Road, $31 some change, and North Avenue, $31 and some change. Based on conversations with our distribution collections, these are the priority roads where we're having the most difficulty but are outside the CDBG area, because yet again, as you recall, we are aggressively going for the FY 2017 CDBG grant in order to actually do pipeline replacement in some of our more poorer areas of the community. So, again, these are outside that area, but they were on your priority list. The following roads are in, on hold anticipation of the approval of the Douglas County SPLUS referendum. So, that's Connors Road from the Allway Stop to Carrington, that's about $91,000. The Connors Road, which is Mirror Lake Parkway to 78, that's about $79,000. Stockmark Road, which is from the city limits to Chestnut Subdivision, the counties, Douglas County already paved outside the city limits, but that's $104,325. And then Old Liberty Road from Connors to the cul-de-sac, and that's roughly just shy $17,000. Alright, the following roads were on your list, however, they're not going to be able to be GDOT certified unless, one, we do some right-of-way acquisition because they're not wide enough, so basically, you have to use local funds, or you're going to have to acquire some right-of-way if you ever want them to be GDOT certified and use the L-MIG money. So, there is a way to get them paved, just not using the L-MIG unless you go through that process. And the second is you have to do a full design. So, that's Division Street, White Street, Sixth Street, and West Gordon Street, portion of West Gordon's already paved, but again, there's right-of-way issues. It's not wide enough according to GDOT standards, and you have to do a full design. And last but not least, this should be near and dear to Councilman Best. This is a subdivision that the previous mayor had, had stated that would be a priority. This council then had it on the list of the priority as the number-one subdivision. This is a subdivision that is substantially built out, and it's waiting for its roads to be topped. In order to pave this subdivision, it is $98,650. The Public Works Director, Pete Savanas, is working with the Public Works Director in Carroll County to see whether or not we can get Carroll County to come in, we pay for the materials, and they'll pave it for us. There's also a couple other roads, for instance, are issue roads that are on that list. Alright, let's go into this. Okay. Okay. Alright, so that's the update on the L-MIG. Paving should start here within about a week, by the way. Alright, from the railroad town hall meeting, obviously, we all sit here, we, we listen to folks, we, we take notes, and then we go out and make sure that whatever answers we give the public are indeed correct. So, some responses from some of the citizen inquiries that were at that town hall. A citizen had said, you know, if a train is stopped, you know, why can't they unbuckle it for, you know, if it's there more than 10 minutes and open up the crossings? I've spoken to GDOT, I've talked to the railroad, I've talked to the Federal Railroad Administration, I've also talked to the lobbying efforts at the Georgia Municipal Association. In Georgia, there is restrictions, there's nothing restricting the amount of time a train can occupy a crossing because they, they consider that an infringement on interstate commerce. Only the federal government can regulate commerce, so there's no restrictions currently exist. And then they have all pointed me to the same verbiage in the state law, which is OCGA 468197. I'm not going to read all of this because it's on our website, but the bottom line is, it says that no member of a train crew, yard crew, or engine crew of a railroad, blah, 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 can be held personally responsible under or found guilty, blah, 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 for any municipal ordinances regulating or intended to regulate the occupying or blocking of any street, road, or highway, and it keeps going on. In talking to the lobby efforts at the Georgia Municipal Association, they said if you, they said other governments have tried to put in similar ordinances as local ordinances, and as soon as they tried to give the railroad a ticket, the railroad lawyers up, and it's going to cost you more than you're ever going to have to ever recruit from that ticket. However, the city of Kennesaw, interestingly enough, passed a local ordinance, and, and y'all might want to consider it, but if a, they have imposed a $1,000 fine on any vehicle that gets stopped ignoring crossings or signs or anything, that actually gets stuck on a crossing or illegally crosses it, and, and so, so they say that their local max is $1,000, so they said, that's the most they can do, that's what they do. So, they actually have signs on their crossings that say, you ignore this sign, get caught, $1,000. So, that is something that you all can take, but, but that has to do with people crossing it or getting stuck. Alright, they, question came... All right, they, question came up, why is the railroad not contacting the city of Bremen? Has the city manager been in contact with Bremen? I told the public that when all this came up, when we were notified, and basically, this is how the city was initially notified, we were tapped on the shoulder and said, hey, just want to let you know that we're getting wind downhill that the railroad's coming. So we let all the city managers from Douglasville all the way to Tallapoosa know about this. In fact, when the council and myself were at Georgia Municipal Association, I spoke and met with the city manager in Bremen. I have spoken this week again to the city manager of Bremen. Yes, they have a beautiful railroad park. No, no one from the railroad has contacted them. And in his opinion, he said that, I'm pretty sure it was someone with his law enforcement staff was told, you know, the railroad's only really concentrating on the unincorporated area. And by the way, I realize I missed this one out of your printout, so I apologize. But, and that they don't really have any crossings that anyone's going to go after anyway. So they said, you know, years ago, they came and negotiated, but there's nothing to negotiate for right now. In fact, even the area that I mentioned last week that was mowed down, that was an unincorporated There's been a lot of dialogue on Facebook, I will admit, I've even gotten some hate mail, but at the end of the day, there's a lot of disinformation floating out there. The first piece is the methods to cross, close a crossing. I stated in the town hall that it is as simple as if the city wants to have a town hall, and if the council then wants to take a vote and do a resolution, it can close it. That is absolutely accurate information. There's three ways to close a crossing. We now, for some reason, have been bumped up to the highest category, and that's of a concern to me. The first one is, is the railroad contacts us or we contact the railroad? Nobody from the city contacted the railroad and said, hey, we want to close this. They actually tapped us. But usually, there's a mutual agreement. Usually, it's because you have some reason, you want to build something, it's economic development, you want a railroad, you know, park, what have you, and you all come and sit down and say, hey, you know, can we close this? And the railroad says, okay, we're fine with that, and you have a town hall, you take a vote, boom, and the GDOT rubber stances. That's number one. What the railroad did was number two. This is under what's called a Section 130 program crossing elimination. What the railroad did is, they came to see the city and said, hey, you've got all these issues under our reclamation program, and we want you to mow it down less than a foot. If you don't, no problem, we'll do it for you. Very nice. And they said, however, you don't have to touch any of that if you'll participate in this Section 130 program. And what that is, is that the railroad comes and says, we're going to offer you some money. In this case, they initially offered $50,000, they've increased it to $60,000. And then, as part of that program, they can go to the State Department of Transportation, and they can seek safety money, in this case, matching money, in this case, it was $7,500, which is the maximum, and that has to be used for safety or improvements or signage or things like that in the corridor, okay? Well, last week, after the State Department of Transportation said that they were threatened by not following the law, they have talked to senior management, and we've been pushed up to what's called the highest level. This is that piece of code that was read at the last meeting, this OCG 326193.1. What that is, is that the railroad says, you know, you got a crossing out here, we don't think it's safe, we want it closed, we're going to petition to have it closed. And the GDOT then with the petition comes in, does an evaluation of that railroad crossing, and determines whether or not it's safe or not, and based on that analysis, then can close it on their own. So as soon as I got word last week that we are now kicked up to number three, the question is why? Do not know if the railroad has officially petitioned, nor can I get an answer as to why we got kicked up to three, other than they said they heard from a couple residents and the accusations where they weren't following the law. So there are three steps. So the question for the council is, what does this truly mean? I almost feel like Bob Barker here, but I apologize, I got documents over there.
Isn't there a difference between being contacted by citizens and insinuating that they were threatened by citizens? That sounds a little incendiary.
Well, the statement to the, to GDOT is that GDOT was not following the law. Why has, why have, why has the safety study not done? To my knowledge, I'm not aware of anyone that's actually called the railroad. So the conversations that I've had with multiple folks at GDOT is that so much disinformation has been out on this, and that the conversations that they've had is that the accusations have been they're not following the letter L. So they say they talked to upper management, and upper management, whomever that is, has made the decision that they're going to come in and do the study. So circulated, and also on the internet, is the criteria that GDOT's going to use for this study. They're going to assemble a team in about, right now, it's about a week and a half away. They anticipate they're going to take about three weeks to gather all the data, and then they're going to make a determination of the safety of that crossing. The question really comes to, is the decision on closing the railroad, that crossing still at your level or not? Ultimately, under the law, the railroad could still officially petition, if they haven't already, to force their hands. And that's a question to, that I don't have an answer yet. On top of that, so I mentioned the highway evaluation. Copies of the process and the evaluation form are posted on the city's website. So if you go back to the link for the town hall meeting under agendas, you'll find all these documents, they were posted over the weekend. And I mentioned that the study should be done by the end of November. A request has been made to Norfolk Southern asking that they stand down, Stan, Stand Down, it's not supposed to be Stand Down, until the city council can evaluate all information, and the full council is seated in January 2017 to consider action. The only thing the question, railroad has asked, they've responded back via email and saying, are you talking December 1st or thereafter? And I told them, I said, based on everything I know, if the railroad finishes up by the end of November, there's no way that the council's going to have time to weigh all that information and make a decision. We're going to need more time. But I don't have a, an agreement from the railroad yet that they're going to stand down, and if so, how long? But we are, we are still communicating with them. And I want to reiterate, because this information has come up multiple times, nobody from the city of Villarica has initiated the discussions about closing Chief Street. They came knocking on our door. You know, folks are saying, we've done our research, that's an absolute bold-faced lie. In fact, GDOT has stated that, you know, they do realize, one staff member made a comment to someone, and they said, you know, if we made a misstatement, we'll correct it. So I've asked them to correct that statement because it's just not accurate. Long story short, from the lobbying effort of GMA, I sat down with them and discussed this whole issue on Wednesday with them. Their guidance to us was good luck. They said, we don't have teeth. So we really ought to sort of engage, I would recommend that the council put together, you know, a group, and as long as you don't have a quorum, and let's go to Atlanta and sit down with the railroad. I really think that, you know, a meeting is really necessary at this point, beyond what we've done, to convey the message and our concerns. Me personally, I'll throw it out there. I am not getting answers back to some of the questions that I posed. For instance, the south side between Chief Street and Jones Street, why is that not on the radar? If you're following your reclamation, doesn't make sense. If you're following your reclamation, how come, and I've talked to each city manager from Douglasville to the state line, we're the only city that is at this level. They're not being knocked on the door, you know. You know, the citizen that asks about Bremen, well, you know, as I said, I told Perry Hicks, I said, well, I just hope the railroad doesn't come knocking on your door now that we've asked all these questions. But I do, I've said it in the news media, I've said it in the meetings, I feel like we're getting a little strong-armed here, but you, you only have so many options, and Councilman Best, being a former coach, he recognizes, you know, being, you know, on the fourth down with 10 seconds on the clock, and you got to make some decisions. And the council only has so many options, so you got to use what's in your playbook. You got a city attorney here, you know, he's doing some additional research, but, you know, we're on borrowed time on their property. So with that said, I apologize, I know it took a little longer on my city manager's report, but I think that you can appreciate why. And I'll go back to my seat and answer any questions for you.
One question as you go back.
Pardon me?
One question as you go back.
One question as I go back or as I go back?
When you go back.
I go back now.
We, six months ago, a year ago, closed some wells in the city. Is that, do we have the opportunity now maybe to go back and revisit that for a water source? Seems like it was 180 gallons a minute.
Yeah, you want to come on out, Pete? I'll let the expert answer that. I could easily tell you no, but he'll explain why.
Probably not. The only way that we could do that would be to approach the state, and we'd have to go through a completely new repermitting process. They do water quality analysis, they would run it through just like they were brand-new sources.
I'm not talking about putting that in the system, I'm talking about putting that into the three lakes that we have, because it is groundwater.
Yeah, we still have to have a permit to withdraw that groundwater to pump it.
Assuming, I'm assuming the same answer is, you know, we, under our permit, we're putting better water into the stream than what we've taken out, and I don't think we could even legally just take that, re-divert it without a change of permit. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think, I definitely feel that we have to go through the permitting process, and then you run into the issues too. Some things that passed muster back in the day when it was permitted may not pass now in terms of their wellhead protection requirements that they have, where those particular wells are located. They have got inner zone and outer zone management that's delineated on that, and they may not pass muster.
Well, back then, when we were using that water, it was directly inserted into the water supply, and therefore, it meant it had to be up to par with the regular water plant on the other side of town. What I was coming up to was just getting that water into our lake, Lake Cowan, if you will, and see if that would benefit that water a day. You know, 180 gallons, not, seemed like a whole lot of water, but it could be two or three weeks, maybe even a month's supply. So if it can't work, it won't work. Thank you.
I have a question in regards to the report that GDOT's going to do. You said they were going to do a study basically on the safety of the crossing. My question is, is that the only aspect? So they don't consider at all the traffic issues, traffic backup, that sort of thing, if that is closed? They're only looking at the safety?
Well, the interesting thing, will you go ahead and put up, I think I gave you the two sheets so that the council can actually see what is on the study. For instance, we've had lots of discussions with GDOT. One was, for instance, and it was interesting, GDOT is very familiar, obviously, with this crossing, because one of the things that they stated to me is, it's like, it's not, do not look at your crossing as if it's like, you know, separate from all the others. What's happening is every time someone gets stuck on that crossing, a call is being made to Alabama, to their control center, and every single crossing and train between you and Alabama is slowing down and stopping and being put on a halt and blocking all these other crossings. So I understand why they have this one on a radar, but at the same point, I've explained to them, it's like, we've made so many improvements, we used to have one truck a month, so I don't know if they're using older data or whatever, but GDOT knows, they've been out here firsthand with us, they've seen the photos, they've seen the video, they know the improvements we've made. One thing we talked about was, you know, we've talked about the can opener issue, you know, about putting the steel bars on both sides. GDOT says, one, you'd have to do it on your own dime, and two, you have to get dual permission. One, you have to get permission from the railroad, and two, you have to get permission from GDOT because you have shared right-of-way on both sides.
The railroad should be happy if we stop those trucks before they get there.
I know, but I'm not so, you know, but again, you know, options, it's always about options. Second one, we talked about an option of a laser. This was something that GDOT had presented about, you know, if you have a truck over 12 feet, a laser triggers, the crossings automatically come down, and only a police officer can release them. GDOT was the first to say, but yet again, that's going to impact traffic, and so now all your residents are going to, you know, because how long will it take to get someone out there, release the crossing? So, you know, they weren't even happy about that solution. So we're open to ideas and suggestions about making the crossing more safer, but it's going to have to be smarter minds than me and others, because, and I keep talking to them about the East Montgomery, I mean, where you look at Montgomery, I mean, let's redo that intersection, let's do a, you know, rapid response project with the state, let's go ahead and re-sculpt that intersection so that trucks can't go down it. You still have the 61 side, but again, there ought to be some solution. But right now, they're not acting.
Based on the fact that the railroad is not being honest with us, if we're saying those could be solutions, because they're not saying that's why they want it shut.
They're not answering certain questions, I, you know.
No, they're saying, we want cars to be able to see the train, and you have to cut down all that stuff. Not once in anything they sent us did they say the problem is trucks are getting, now we think that might be the truth, but that's not what they're saying.
I agree with you. I'm not dismissing that, I just, I wish that they would answer the tougher questions, but those are getting avoided. You know, this is not a car site issue in my mind. It's, they want that crossing closed, and they want to use this as an opportunity to get it closed.
So if we can convince them that we can keep vehicles from getting stuck there, we might have some leeway with them.
That's why I think that the next step ought to be, like I said, you know, the council ought to really do a contingent, maybe myself, city attorney, you know, we ought to probably go down to Atlanta and meet with someone higher up in the railroad at this point.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, what's on the screen is all of the data. Again, this is on the website, you go to, what is it, you go to council, agendas and minutes, and then you select the date for, and click on more, and you'll see all these documents and the law and everything that we've had so far on this topic is online.
All right, thanks, you finished with that. All right, next on the agenda is public comment. Please state your name and your address, and please limit it to three minutes.
My name is Jody Mount, I live at 214 Rockmark Road, and I'm the citizen that contacted, where's the button?
I think it's on.
It's not here. It's on the bottom.
Pull it out and hold it to your mouth.
Well, the light was on. Is the supposed, light was supposed to be on?
You might just have to be closer to it.
I don't think it's on, Jody.
Yeah, I would say put it up close.
Okay. I'm the citizen that contacted GDOT.
You still can't tell.
Still not on, all right.
It has a red light, but it doesn't.
The red light's not red lighting.
It has no amplification.
We got a battery?
I'll try and speak up. I'm the citizen that contacted GDOT. All of my communications are on Jody Mount from Villarica on Facebook. If you don't have Facebook, if you want to contact me, I will send that to you. I did not threaten anyone, I merely pointed out what the law says. And I asked GDOT, why? Why is it your policy to not be concerned about traffic implications or safety if a government and the railroad agrees? That makes no sense, because the law is in place to protect us, to check out what the traffic backup does and everything. Just like you mentioned, they are like concerned if they put the laser up. Well, hello, they're not concerned about if they completely knock out the crossing? That makes no sense. None of this has made sense. None of this has made sense. We've been bulldozed, railroaded, whatever you want to call, and it's time we stand up. That's all. You know, and I will take a look at the laws that you've mentioned from the federal government, because, sorry, I don't trust the interpretation of these laws of the railroad. They're gonna put their own spin on it. And, but please, if you don't have read my emails, read them, and if you think I was threatening, let me know, because that was not my intention. I merely wanted answers, just some answers, because it may be that that's the best thing for Villarica to close that, but I want to see some studies first. I want to see the impact on safety, I want to see the impact on traffic before that happens. And I'm very grateful that they are going to head and do these studies. Thank you.
I don't know if you can hear me, I'm a little hoarse. My name is Bruce Redderton, nine eight eight one reflections, Dry in Villarica. Mine may be more of a question than it is a comment, but I was looking over tonight's meetings and that, and things obstructed me on the back page on public works. Kicking wood needs twenty-two thousand covered work, non-budgeted. Twenty-five thousand two hundred and nineteen, a non-budgeted item. Eleven thousand two hundred dollars, a non-budgeted item. That's fifty-eight thousand plus dollars. You know, a little pocket change like that can go a long ways from time to time. What I don't see in things, or I don't hear, and this is my question, where's the term contingency on projects and funds? Every project that I've ever been involved in, you better have a contingency fund, and from the track record I've seen by most public projects, it better be twenty-five to fifty percent in fund, or you don't come nowhere meeting your goal. We've got a trailhead contract down here, I don't dispute the contract, that's not my question, but five hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, six hundred and thirty-four and eighty-three cents. Really? We're good. I just, why don't we do contingencies? I guess that's the question, and where's that? Why does everything miss the budget, run over, and we're coming back, non-budgeted this, non-budgeted that? And then we talk about budgets are coming up, and everybody wants to know, why don't we have any money? Thank you.
Testing. John Mount.
The battery's out.
Two fourteen Rockmart Road. I would like, first on the railroad meeting, I would like to just point out, I really appreciate Danny Carter taking a vote of the residents, I think that was very thoughtful of him, that he actually showed you cared what we thought, and counted our hands, and asked us to have to hold up our hand and vote on it, so I appreciate that very much. The main thing I come up here for was the issue with the enterprise funds coming up. I really hope that the council looked at the rates coming up and some fixes coming, you know, that will improve this enterprise fund where it pays for itself. The, I know one of the big concerns is we currently have a law that if you're over sixty-five, you get a lot of breaks on your water rates and your taxes. I really feel like that that should be based on a income-based situation and also property value. If someone lives in a million dollars house and they can't afford water, then don't expect the rest of the city to chip in and pay it for you. And then we have all these factories out here that use water, we need to charge what the water costs, and charge for what the sewer costs to make this fund whole. It just really bothers me that I'm funding water for, you know, for factories and for people to wash their fences and just to do whatever, and, you know, it just doesn't seem fair. It should be based on a fair process, that everybody pays their share for what they use. If some people need some help, then they need to show that they need help and put in the effort to get that help from the city, not just be given to them. Thank you.
Jeff Reese, one twenty, Harrell Road. I'd just like to know if the city has looked at Spring Lake as an alternative for, like, we do have another lake in the city, and it's spring-fed. I've been on it a few times myself, and I bet it's full pool right now. Just, that was a question, I guess, for staff, but I think that used to be a water treatment, or not a water treatment, it used to be a water plant back in, I think until the fifties, the end of the fifties, it was still in operation, so. I know the water plant itself has been tore down, I understand the infrastructure is not in place, but maybe it's time we started looking at that as an alternative for our water source. Thank you.
Michael Young, ninety-six, thirty-four Coastal Point in Merril Lake. My two comments are on the budget. First of all, the budget that is posted out on the website under the documents folder still has pages thirty-three and thirty-four identical, and normally I wouldn't bring that up, but I heard that thirty-four was accidentally made identical and it should have been something else, so if we can update what's posted out on the website, I appreciate it. In numerous cases in the budget, there are items marked based on current year CY, current year projection. That's not very helpful in a lot of cases. On page sixty-three, talking about printing and binding, it's thirty-two percent higher than the budget for 2016. But that means 2016 says current year projection, that means 2016 is thirty-two percent over budget, three thousand dollars over budget, so the explanation doesn't help me much. I'll give you one more example. Page seventy-three, operating supplies down at the bottom, twenty-four percent increase based on current year projections, that's thirty thousand dollars over budget, but it doesn't tell me why it's over budget, so. There's a lot of cases where a little bit more explanation would be helpful.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Hallie Hendrickson, two twenty Eagles Flight. I really just want to, I want to thank Jody Mount for her efforts, as well as the council and Mr. Millar's efforts to make us aware of this railroad, the Cheese Road situation. I think we all want the same thing, it's just how we get there. But, you know, if you've ever seen the movie Mr. Smith Goes to Washington, you know, I mean, I think we need to do what we can together. The idea of a going down to visit with the state, I don't know the pros and cons of that, who would be involved? We don't have a fourth ward representative right now, we don't have an act, I mean, we have a, you know, a sitting, I don't know what you call it, but anyway, we don't have a mayor in place.
Interim mayor.
So, I just wanted to state that, you know, I mean, last month, the town hall meeting was very obvious that the citizens are extremely concerned, and is this study going to evaluate the safety from the standpoint of cars being hit, trucks being hit, or is it also going to be evaluated from the standpoint of emergency vehicles being able to come and go? And what happens when everybody gets backed up and you cannot get through? So, and when will they do the study? Will it be done over a period of days? Will they do a traffic study as far as flow of traffic and numbers of people? How, what kind of study do they do? I don't know. Y'all have a hard job in front of you, you really do, but I think there's a lot of people that would like to get behind you if there's anything on this side, but I do appreciate folks like Jody Mount as a citizen who, you know, speak up, and all of you, really, who've spoken up about it. Thank you.
I said, you know what, it's time.
Your name, sir, your name and that.
Oh, excuse me. My name is Russell Ross, six-two-six Meadows Court, Revel Trace subdivision. I was here about a year ago, talking about some things that I thought was, they needed upgrading in my subdivision. I want to thank the chief, I want to thank Mr. Millar, because I have seen that our subdivision has come up tremendously, throughout our subdivision, you see the carries being taken in our community. I see the patrolmen out there, and I've seen your people out there, and I just want to say thank you. One of the things that is my concern, as a man that's approaching sixty-five years of age, is I want to piggyback on, see my eyesight, anyway, on what he said. I'm approaching sixty-five, and I'm gonna get that little break on taxes, but my concern is this, my youngest child is forty-two years old, I have a forty-five-year-old son with three grandchildren. I live in the city, county of Carroll. I'm paying city tax, county tax, and school tax. I'm sixty-five. The maintenance rate has increased, my property has devalued, I'm on a fixed income, so like most older people on a fixed income, and by the way, I did work, but my 401K was exhausted because I'm on a fixed income, and I have medical problems that exceed my budget, so my concern as a voter and a veteran, I've done my part, so I want to know, and I know it's all big government, it's beyond me, as an older guy, frozen sixty-five, with no children, why am I paying school taxes? And I'm not a, I don't, I can't even go to the school. They're like, what are you doing on property? You don't have any kids going here? Are you a pervert? Yeah, it's funny, it's funny, but it's not.
Coming off soon.
I mean, I'm being, I'm being, I'm being, to use a term way back when, representation without what? Taxation without representation? The Boston Tea Party? I feel like I am being, not railroaded, because I live in this US of A, which I love very much, if I didn't, I wouldn't have served from nineteen seventy-one to nineteen ninety-two. But I think, I'd just like to know, and if I do have to pay those school taxes, I will, because I'm a citizen of these United States and this county, but I just want to know why? A man like me with a fixed income, why am I paying school taxes when I don't have any children? My grandchildren too small to go to Villarica school. Matter of fact, they're in Atlanta. So, I mean, I know it sounds comical, but it's an issue that's very dear to my heart, like most senior citizens. And I was sitting there, and I'm like, man, this is your time, and I don't mean two minutes, I'm gone. Thank you very much.
Russell, Russell, you talked to my husband in the Army hat, go Army. He will cover all that school tax with you.
I'm Larry Boss, I'm five seventeen, let's just drive, been here fifty-one years, and this crossing thing is part of the railroad's fault. Every time they redo the railroad, they raise the thing several inches, so over the years, that track has gone up to the point now, it's become a hazard. Why don't you consider moving that crossing about three hundred feet westward and be level and go across, that wouldn't be a problem at all? Thank you.
Show us one yet? We haven't.
You just got to know Larry Boss.
Yes, yes, I know.
Doctor Larry Boss.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to come forward and say public comments? If not, we would close this portion and we will have our finance promised hefty.
I'll just read it for you. Madam Mayor, this is an introduction of an ordinance to adopt the city budget for fiscal year 2017 for the city of Villarica to repeal conflicting ordinances to provide an effective date and for the purpose, for other purposes. As part of this, the city is required to have a number of public hearings and readings of the budget. The city staff has presented the council with the budget, therefore this is a public hearing number one, as I just officially read the ordinance for the budget into the record. Just in case there's questions.
Yeah, it would be appropriate to see if anyone has any comments about the proposed budget at this first public hearing.
Okay. Since this is open to the public and this is the first hearing of the budget, is there anyone in the audience that has a comment on the budget?
Do we know when the next two hearings are scheduled?
It's written down somewhere.
Pardon me?
David, do we know when the next two public hearings are scheduled?
Yes, on the back of the agenda, there's a 2017 budget review and adoption calendar, sir? Turn to the last page of the agenda.
Okay, probably here, November, November the...
Twenty-ninth.
You got a chance here.
That's a public budget review. The next public comment is on November twenty-ninth at three PM here in council chambers, and then we'll hold a third on December first, 2016, at six PM.
And don't forget about our budget workshop.
And the adoption would be December the fifteenth, right?
Yeah, but that's not public comment, that's a workshop.
All right, here we know, comments from the audience, we move forward. The next is B, first on the, on the B is, I'm planning zoning, is Loth Lane.
Ms. Coleman is out ill unfortunately, so I will fill in for Ms. Coleman. This is, a question came up at the work session with whether or not this was street or lane, it is Loth Lane. A staff member had written street, when in fact they meant lane, so we apologize for that handwritten map. This is a driveway that exists between Temple Street and Church Street, otherwise known as Loth Lane. Sent council some correspondence in response to questions we received, and speaking to the most recent landowner on that, a land survey was done, and this alleyway is not part of that land survey, and I understand that the city attorney had also communicated, which I forwarded to council, that another resident, I believe it was, it's been basically this year for at least, what, twenty years?
Mr. Camp, who's present here tonight. Yeah, I have not formally checked the title, although we are looking at the title to all the property downtown right now, but in speaking to Mr. Camp, who's had more familiarity with that road or alleyway than anybody I know, it's apparently been open and being used by the public for, you know, four to five decades, probably before any of us were born, so I think it's been dedicated to the public, but I don't know that it's ever been formally named before now.
Yeah, Mr. Large had stated in my conversations with him that when he had renovated those lofts, he created the two entranceways, and so as part of the postal service addressing, they had to go down to the map room, do some research, and then, he said the county actually, he believes, named the street, whether officially or unofficial, and then the postal service assigned the addressing. Um, and, uh, and then the, um, uh, and then the postal service, uh, signed the, uh, addressing configuration. Of course, he also said, "Well, how about that other alley?" And I said, "Oh, okay. There's a reason we're asking about this one. It's because, you know, we have a public safety issue of, uh, if they call nine-one-one, there's no street signs, anything. Nobody actually knows where Loft Lane is, if you will."
It's not on our road registry either, so, you know, if you approve the naming of it tonight, I think we probably need to come back in our next meeting and formally adopt the street into our road register as Loft Lane.
If we adopt that road, are we going to have to bring it up to some standard?
No.
That's good to know.
Unless you use state tax money to, uh, do something with it.
I, I'm not aware that there's any plans to, to do anything, to change it.
We're not required to do anything to it.
No.
If we adopt it as one of our roads.
Uh, you know, I think it's probably already adopted as a, an assumed road. I mean, it's, uh, unless you just wanted to clo- unless you wanted to close it. Yeah, and I wouldn't recommend that. I, I think it is a public road right now. Uh, but it, it always will be a good thing to try and formally document that so that somebody fifty years from now is not trying to figure out the same thing that we are.
So tonight is just to, if we, the, the council approves to, uh, accept it as a street, is that what we...
No, I, I think, I think you're just assigning the name to it tonight of Loft Lane. I'd like to prepare a, a written resolution for you to formally adopt it.
Oh. But it says that it's a request to formally adopt the roadway, but we can change that. So we really only have to give it a name, huh?
Yeah, you don't, you don't have anything in written form, which, which is what we're required to have, but, um...
So I could make a motion, um, make a motion...
You just defer to next month.
Yeah, I think it'd be appropriate to go ahead and m- make a motion to name the street Loft Lane so that I can bring back a written resolution to adopt Loft Lane.
I make a motion.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we will accept Loft Lane as the name of this street. All in favor? Opposes? None. Motion carries. Item number two is Twin Oaks.
Um, this is a, um, a, uh, request to, uh, actually have final plot review for the Twin Oaks, uh, Unit Two-A. Staff has conveyed and conversed, uh, with the applicant about the situation of the, um, uh, public infrastructure out there. Um, they have, um, uh, agreed in concept that it does need to be brought up to city standards. Um, so, um, at this time, the recommendation to the city council is to, at this time, deny the final plot review as an act. And then, uh, we'll have them, uh, come back. It's up to you whether or not you want to, um, uh, and, and the city attorney can weigh in this, whether or not you want to give them a twelve-month, uh, sort of, uh, lea- because they have paid the final plot fee. Um, I think that's three-hundred dollars. So it's up to you whether or not, uh, uh, you want to have them refile. Um, but, uh, we're asking that you actually take action. And based on that discussion, uh, the applicant said that they would not be present tonight.
What would our action be?
Uh, the recommendation is to deny the final plot review at this point, but, um, consider whether or not you want to give them a twelve-month timetable on the, uh, filing fee, uh, for when they want to actually come back and, um, file for the final plot review.
Is that so they wouldn't have to pay it again? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
And also, um, what is not up to standard?
Um, things such as curb gutter, um, um, sewer, uh, lines. Things that are public infrastructure that you, when you adopt a road, basically you adopt that, that it's up to code, and now the city owns it and will continue to maintain it. So you want it, uh, up to current code so that at the time of adoption, um, you know that you don't have to immediately go in there and do some repairs.
I make a motion that we deny?
I knew this was coming.
What kind of problem you think there is? Wait a minute. Now, we just got through telling this, this, this street down here that's not up to, to standards is okay to adopt.
But nobody, nobody owns that street. Nobody, we don't have an owner.
No owner.
We have named it.
We tried to find an owner that we could give it to, but we couldn't find one.
If you want to buy it and, and bring up the code and then give it to the city, uh...
And it's really small compared to whatever we're...
We just gave it a name, that's all.
We're talking about a bunch of stuff.
I knew that question was coming up.
We now have Loft Lane.
Okay, what was your, your motion?
I, I make a motion that we deny the request, but that we give them, without having to pay again, we give them some time to bring it up to, um, to code. Is twelve months, is that recommended by staff as I'm making this motion and asking that question?
Yeah, because you don't want to make an agreement, uh, beyond one year of, of sort of the council's, um, you know...
Okay, then I'll include that as part of the motion. Let's give them one year to bring it up to standards without having to refile and repay.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we deny the request with the stipulation that they have one year to bring this street up to code so that it can be adopted. All in favor? Opposes? Four to zero. All right, item number two, I think we had since all of this with the North Loop, but we still have to take it one item at a time, right?
Madam, you have Harthouse.
No, we have Harthouse, first, number one.
Okay, I'm sorry.
C one.
Okay, C one is the Harthouse.
Good evening, mayor and council. Uh, first item I have is the Harthouse. Uh, we contracted with Georgia West. Uh, had a fee not to exceed nine-thousand dollars for engineering and service, uh, surveying services, uh, for the preliminary design, cost estimates to extend, uh, sewer service along US seventy-eight Van Kett Highway west of Van Wirt Road. And, uh, also to, uh, provides, uh, sanitary sewer connections for the First Baptist Church. Um, John Bass from Georgia West is here. And at this time, I'd like to ask, uh, if he would come up here and give his, uh, presentation on his findings.
Good evening. I'm John Bass, Georgian West. Alyssa, do you have the file to show the map? We've been working with, with Pete on, uh, some studies on this sewer. Uh, we were shown, uh, what had been previously drawn up. Did a quick estimate, uh, to give y'all some numbers, I believe in the last meeting y'all had. Um, and we've, we spent a little time with them to explore all the alternatives that we could come up with, um, to present to you the findings. And this, uh, this map is... Can we pull up the PDF? You're upset.
It's, uh, it's on the web.
I think ours turns pink every time.
Yeah, engineering one of two, two of two. The maps, the maps are two of two.
Looks even better on here, see?
Turn it up, Lisa.
If you have a printout, it'll, it'll show much better. One I want you to see first is this one.
Yes. You have got that.
So what this does, it, it basically summarizes the alternatives that we've looked at. Um, you have existing sewer in the Waterford subdivision. Um, and that is about the only feasible spot to start from. It, it's, uh, not much sewer is available in this area. So what we've looked at is a couple of locations at Waterford that we could extend from, from a gravity sewer standpoint. Um, you'll see a green line, a, a red line, and blue line, uh, all, all working from that subdivision going west towards the church. Uh, there's another option that, that we looked at, but it's not shown. It's running it all the way from the subdivision to seventy-eight and west. But we real quickly threw that one out because it just, with the elevations in the terrain, it makes no sense to even think about it. So, so the best way to, to come across there is looking, uh, somewhere along the north side of the church. Uh, option A is, is really the, uh, the best as far as thinking about your serviceability on that line. Um, you got, B and C is, is another way to route it just because of some, some depth issues, to limit depth of manholes and what have you. Uh, the problem is, you see, it's, it's scissoring through property. Uh, and, and we don't own that, so that's, that's going to be a, a real issue of property owners. Not to mention with all the zigzagging, it, it creates additional length on the sewer line, which creates additional cost. Um, so our, our, as we were looking, the option A became more and more desirable. Um, now, the, the one thing that, that is unfortunate with, even with A, is right there on the north side of the church, you'll see it turn and cross their driveway. We can no longer go eat, uh, uh, west, excuse me, towards Van, North Van Wirt Road following their drive because the drive dips down too low. Gravity sewer won't go across there. So that's, that's the reason why you see the green line crossing the driveway, coming south a little bit and kind of swinging west to get up under, uh, North Van Wirt Road. Um, that is the furthest north we can get gravity sewer with acceptable slopes on the line, uh, on North Van Wirt Road. But that option does yield, uh, the, the furthest north in the red and the blue. Um, there is another option, uh, we're exploring that. The, uh, purple is option D. And that is taking the lift station that is the churches. And the city, uh, taking that, and there's, there's, you can extend a gravity sewer line west across North Van Wirt Road, conceptually the way we've got shown. Uh, it gives a tiny bit more service area, but not a, not an appreciable difference. Um, but the factors that we need to consider with that is, the lift station is designed for the church. If we think about future development along seventy-eight and Van Wirt area, uh, the station would more than likely have to get upgrades to it to be able to service that. Uh, so what I've done is, uh, some cost estimates on option A and option D. And you should have those.
Which, which one is the cost estimate on option A? Because I can't...
Uh, it's the one that says gravity main option. You see that up at the top? You have that, Alyssa? Um, no, the, uh, the spreadsheet breakdown of the cost estimate. There it is. That's what it should look like.
Okay, here we go. Sanitary sewer.
Yeah, just to be clear, uh, this, this, uh, sewage flow is from Van Wirt Road east into the Waterford subdivision. And that continues to a lift station in Waterford and is pumped out further east in a gravity system as it goes down to the wastewater plant.
Okay. That, that one's showing up. That's not option A. This is it, option A. Isn't it two-hundred-and-seven-thousand dollars?
No, that is, that's another line. We'll get to that one in just a minute. It should say gravity main option on the top of it. Uh, the two options on the left.
The three ninety-six?
Yeah, three-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand dollars is, is that total we're seeing there. Um, and then there is another estimate that we provided behind that that should say force main option.
Yeah.
And that, what that estimate does, it gives you an idea of, if you take the, the lift station, today, there's, there may not be much that you have to do to it. But if, if we're planning for growth in the area, and as it receives more wastewater to it, pumps are going to have to be upsized. Force main's going to have to be upsized. Station needs generator, needs SCADA system to communicate with the, the, uh, other infrastructure. Um, and it kind of goes on and on. And, and we've, we've got this price tag hung on the estimate for the force main just so that you're aware of, uh, potential cost for the upgrade of that and extending the gravity to, to Van Wirt, although it's a short section of gravity sewer. So you're looking at almost five-hundred-thousand dollars for that option.
Which option D?
Uh, yeah, that'd be option D is the force main option.
That's the option that they have now?
No, I'm presenting a couple of different pricing options for y'all so you kind of see the magnitude of cost, uh, with either one.
What is the green one across the top?
The green one is the gravity line. That's the three-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand dollar.
What's this other one? Gravity main option, sanitary sewer, two-hundred-and-seven-thousand. What's that?
That's a force main, uh, overall. You got, you got a breakdown.
Hey, John, what may help is, let's go back to page one from the top, because the public's probably just as confused. And, and let's start with the top, so that you and the clerk are on the same page, and, and walk the madam clerk and the council through what they're looking at, so that what you have on your screen, which they have, and they have in print form, matches up.
Sure.
Thank you.
This, uh, this page right here is, is trying to kinda summarize, to keep it short and simple for you, so you see some of the major breakdown items, and then a grand total. If you'll notice, line seven and line eight, they say C attached, cause those are further broken-down items. To, to break those items out, we split that out as a separate table. That should be the next sheet, so if you flip to the second page, you'll see the breakdown in the erosion control. And all these are construction cost estimates, I should clarify. So, that breaks down all the items from an erosion sediment control standpoint that would be required. And then, this page, the page three of that first estimate, details out manholes, pipes, inverts, booths, bore and under the road, all that, so that you can see a breakdown of, of the scope and the pricing of each. And we utilize that breakdown to, to basically build the entire project budget on that first page. So, the force main option has the same thing, if you wanna go to that one. We've got the overall price breakdown. Again, the grand total at the bottom's four ninety-three. Erosion control and sanitary sewer line item, we've, we've broken out again, it says C attached. So, there, the second page of that breaks out the erosion control pricing at forty, just under forty-one thousand. And then, this third page breaks out the sanitary sewer. You'll see on there, line one on that is a hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars to upgrade the lift station. Like I said, that's upgrading the pumps, the generator, SCADA system, you have it. You'll end up having three-phase power to it. Right now, it's single-phase, cause it's a small pump system. And then, next, we're showing a force main. Stay back on that page, Alyssa, I'm sorry. Go back to the previous. You'll see there's a six-inch force main. They have a three-inch force main right now. The more wastewater we add to it, the, the bigger the pipe needs to get. This is just an estimate right now, as far as the sizing. We've, we've not had time to do any real studies to get a firm size, but I would, I would say it would be close to that. But, again, there's manholes, pipe, inverts, bores, that total all up to just shy of two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars on that option. So, the reason I gave you those two is so that you could see, if you, if, if we plan for the gravity line up to, near the church, you're talking about four-hundred thousand dollars. If you, if you plan for the, to, if you consider taking the lift station, you may not have much cost initially, but for growth in that area, you're gonna have significant cost, as well as the maintenance burden of a lift station. And I, I know you are aware of it, cause y'all got plenty of stations in the city, so. From our standpoint, you know, we, we feel like thinking gravity would be ideal. So, what we did beyond that estimate is, we wanted to explore, if, if we do this gravity sewer, what, what else will be served with it? What are the benefits that we could get out of it? The second map that you have, it, it goes into more detail of that proposed gravity main that runs from Waterford up to the church. There's also two extensions of that main, if you will. East of the church, you'll see there's a, there's a line that goes south to Seventy-Eight. It's labeled on there, proposed Highway Seventy-Eight East Sewer Extension, and that runs to Seventy-Eight, and then, we're proposing some, some lines that parallel Seventy-Eight, all the way from north, or South Van Wirt Road, North Van Wirt Road, whichever you have, east, back towards the main entrance to Waterford. Now, there's a manhole at the Waterford entrance, so there's no need to go beyond that point. So, that would essentially serve that area of town from that North Van Wirt along Seventy-Eight to some degree. You'll see there's a, a little bit of a pink or a peach hatching on your map, and what we've, what we've done is, is approximated the service area from a gravity standpoint that could drain into this, uh, uh, gravity system. So, it kinda gives you an idea, area-wise, what we could serve along the Seventy-Eight corridor. Jumping back on the west side of the church at North Van Wirt Road, we're, we're also showing that line, another line extending to Seventy-Eight and running west on Seventy-Eight, west of that intersection. Just from a feasibility standpoint, on the, on the vertical of the sewer line, seeing how far it could run and serve, and, and that's, that's what we've, where we've gotten to is basically, uh, right there, about at that Marathon Gas Station. And that would primarily serve that northwest corner of that intersection.
Is that all that gravity fed?
Yes, sir. Now, there's several properties on the south side of Seventy-Eight that, that, they fall away from the road, so you'll notice there's very limited area that we have shown in that map that is serviceable by the gravity line. Obviously, all that depends on how that site is developed, and how they grade elevations, where they set their building elevations and that sort, but based on a, a best guess, you know, analysis on those properties, we feel like, we felt like we could get some smaller commercial tracks along that south side of Seventy-Eight that would still drain gravity. So, that is what goes to the next two estimates I've given you. I know there's a lot of estimates, but I'm trying to get you to, to a good idea of what, what we feel like cost would be for this. I have a, an estimate broken down on the proposed Highway Seventy-Eight East Sewer Extension. That should be the one following the force main option. You have that back on the estimates? Scroll down to another page. So, it's same format again, that we did the other ones. The overall sheet shows grand total of three-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand dollars. Page two and three of the estimate go through the details of the erosion control and sanitary sewer. Erosion control still were around forty-one thousand dollars for this option, and then, sewer is two-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand. That, that, again, that option is the gravity line that would run up, run south to Seventy-Eight, and then follow Seventy-Eight, basically from Van Wirt Road over to Waterford, about three thousand feet of sewer line. So, then, the, the next estimate behind that gives you the breakdown of what the cost would be if we were to extend west of that intersection, with that line that I was telling you runs down Seventy-Eight West to about the Marathon Gas Station. We've broken down those costs as well, and we believe that would be about a two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollar project for.
According to this note, you still would probably have to pay for utility relocation, rock excavation, and all that.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the, yeah. Well, what we've got on every one of these is a contingency. We gotta have contingency planned. Now, knowing how much is a big unknown, but we know there's rock occasionally, we know there's, there's some utilities that could get tangled up in, so there's always those unknowns, and just this early in the game, we just don't know to what magnitude of cost that would be, but.
But the one you recommended was the one across the top, over to Van Wirt?
Yeah, the green line for, uh, at least for, for what we believe the plan is today, that we feel like getting the gravity to the church with that green line, option A, in our minds would be the most feasible, because what it does, it, it gives you that flexibility for doing further extensions, like we just mentioned on up to Seventy-Eight, to, to have gravity service for all that area, as, as development, you know, starts pushing that side of town.
Just how much do you like, option A? Four-hundred thousand dollars worth?
That's y'all's call, mate. It's easy for me to put the numbers down, y'all gotta write the check.
All the other, just for clarification, to make it easier for everybody that's lucky enough to sit through all this, all those others are just, if you do this other line to the church, in the future, you can do this from that line.
Yes.
We don't even need to look at those now, it's just, this is what you can do if you have that line, and you wanna expand to those areas and hook people up to water. Is that gonna have some grand advantage for us, cause, man, it's just killing me to look at these numbers? Tell us some good news about, there's a good reason we wanna hook that out there with expansion.
Well, the good news is, there's no sewer there today, so when you bring it, there will be.
Theoretically, you're gonna get tap fees and to pay for some of it.
And to pay for water and sewer.
I mean, the water, the water's already there.
This is the sewer line, I'm sorry, sewer line, sewer line.
You already have water in that quarter, you just don't have, and, and.
Well, you actually do have sewer there, and the question that I have is can, for a period of time, can you tap into the existing sewer line until splopped, or until four-hundred thousand, five-hundred thousand dollars shows up that we could use for sewer line?
Where's, help me, what sewer are we referring to?
At, at the existing church.
The lift station.
The lift stations, and, you know, I, I guess my, my, my issue is, and I've been there for several times, Wednesday, Saturday, Sunday, daytime activities, and I just, I don't know. Pete might be able to help us out on this, is, is how much, uh, how much sewer are we talking about, how much backup we'll have, how much whatever. I don't, don't know the answer to that. It seems to be that would be the less expensive part of it, but it also would mean that down the road, we would have to completely do a total makeover, which is, is not unheard of. And like I say, there are places on that, in that corridor right there, that could help repay for some of the, the sewer line that's there. I don't know, gonna be a tough decision to make.
I think we had a pretty good agreement with the church.
Well, the agreement with the church was that it's gonna be a hundred-and-ten thousand dollars, cause that's what the four-and-a-half acres that was brought up, was gonna be about a hundred-and-ten thousand dollars for the sewer line to go across.
And it's very different, so would it, would it make a difference if it was moved into twenty-seventeen with the budget, so that we're not doing a lot of unbudgeted items?
You know, in, the, the reality is, is you, you have less than a half a million of sploß money left. So, right now, we have the water pipeline project on hold, which is out of the water sewer fund. So, the reason those projects are on hold was to wait until the council decided what it was going to do on this project. It's not a matter of having more money next year, because you, you have upside-down enterprise funds. So, next year, you will, for the first time, start getting more splozzed in, but, but, so look at your capital projects. You, you, you are spread way too thin. The, 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 the thought process of, or, or the mantra of fiscal conservative was, was basically be, you know, telling the public they were gonna kick the can down the road. So, in this case, the cans, you know, you've caught up with the can. So, next year, if you wanna talk water sewer, you know, the question is going to be, on the council side, phase two of North Loop, are you gonna put water and sewer along that quarter? So, you, you, you always have contingency in the sense that you have fund balance. So, you, you always have the funds, whether it's now or later, until you've exhausted all sploß funds, and then, you've exhausted, you know, fund balance. So, so that's that five-point-four years of critical mass that I keep talking about, is that, you know, you have to, to, to make a, a conscious decision of, you know, all your expenditures, if you will.
Okay, I guess, to be clear, in a sense, the church did something, they held up their end of the bargain, that they were gonna do certain things, with the understanding and the expectation that then we would run a sewer line, although, nothing's done until we pass it and sign it. So, I feel like we, our word is on the line, but obviously, the price is a whole lot higher than anybody thought, and that's what I'm looking at, is how do we address that? I, I get what you're saying, is it could be addressed in this budget, based on decisions we make about the enterprise fund.
Yeah, that is, that's one of the realities. We made a deal with the church. They did their part, they moved the heart house, saved the old heart house, and they'd been better off to use that destruction permit and torn that thing down, but it's too late now. It's sitting on four acres, they're ready to deed the heart house and four acres over to the city, so they've, they've completed their part of the bargain. Now, do we stand behind our word? I don't know. It's gonna make us look bad, we made a deal with them, back out on it.
Are they okay right now, if we make this decision, when we have our other people on board? Is that gonna cause a problem?
I don't know what their timetable is on their, on their construction. I, you know, I, I'd have to ask.
Can we ask them?
I, I would have to ask them that question.
Yeah, cause I'm, I kinda feel like, okay, these numbers are surprising, and yet, I, we were told that there was much benefit in the future to us doing it. It wasn't all about us doing something for the church in exchange for that property. It was the idea that we were extending out to where we could provide this service for more customers, and that that would be an economic benefit, development benefit in the city.
And, and our economic development ultimately is, there is no sewer in that corridor, and you have a commercial corridor. So, so long-term, as that develops, yes, it's just like North Loop, there's always gonna be an economic development of tap fees. You can't get tap fees where you don't have sewer. But, of course, if the enterprise fund's losing money, until you also resolve the fees, you'll never even, you're in a losing proposition all the way around, I hate to tell you that, but, but it's the truth. So, you have to address everything holistically, if you will. The, the funds are there, you know, isolated in the, the splozzed account, awaiting the decision of the council.
Okay, well, I can only speak for myself. I feel like we've gotta keep our word with the church, the understanding that we would run a sewer line. How we do that might be, and exactly when we do it, I'd feel more comfortable doing it when we have our other ward person on and our mayor, but that's just me. Y'all may feel differently.
And something I didn't get the opportunity to clarify earlier.
Just giving you a hard time.
Well, that's why, that's why I've, to get, I, I posed the lift station idea. I mean, it's, it is a way to have city sewer. The church wouldn't have to maintain it, but at some point, the city will be bearing the cost to make upgrades. It doesn't have to be today necessarily, but, but that's a, a decision you have to make.
The city would do have to do the maintenance for all of this after.
It's our line.
So, the point I wanted to make is, with all this studies, there's, there's still no gravity sewer to the heart house, just to make sure everybody understands that.
I don't think it was intended that we go by the heart house, but we were trying, we were sold as a win-win to run sewer across the property and get over to Van Wirt Road. That was what we were sold, so we said, go ahead, make the deal.
I just wanted to make sure that nobody had that assumption, that, that we would have gravity sewer there, so.
I'm not so sure we'll even be able to put sewer in there as a septic tank. We can't put septic tank, can't put, cause it's in the floodplain. So, unless you get sewer from the city at some point, I, I don't know a way that you're gonna be able to, uh, ever attach sewer right there.
Yeah, I talked to a soil scientist that lives here locally, Chris Gaines. He said when the trees were getting taken down on the lot with the house moving there, he, he went by to look, just out of his own curiosity. Soils are real gray, looking bad for septic. He said it, we, there may be a possibility to find a limited spot on that piece of property for septic, but it would be very difficult to find.
So, the heart house would have to have a lift station, huh?
That or a pit, pretty. Bring it back to the age that it is.
Ooh, with the outhouse on.
We, we can make it really, really antique, you know?
A historical park.
The outhouse in the past, I mean.
It did work in the past, didn't it? outhouses and all that stuff.
What is the place of the council?
I would make a motion that we delay until we have our mayor and Ward Four on board.
That's gonna be, what, next Wednesday?
It could be later than that.
December, and then, we have to deal with the budget, you know? At least we'll be looking at the budget together.
So, in essence, you're saying the new budget?
We'll have them on for their input, and we'll be dealing with the budget at the same time, where when we're talking about this, we can talk about how we're gonna do it.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been properly seconded that we would postpone the vote on this until after the election and after the budget.
Until we have a full council.
Until we get the budget in order, and that we get the mayor and the election done. All in favor? Opposing?
All righty.
Thanks, John.
The next items, two, three, and four, C, C two, three, and four, are related to the north bypass. The first one is utilities. Department of Transportation has requested that the city verify the existing water and sanitary sewer utilities, and prepare a final relocation plan for the utilities for the bypass. At this time, they'll also look if we need to upgrade any services in that area that we may see anticipated growth coming in that area possibly. So, this is an engineering services proposal with Kekkunwood, and the amount of twenty-two thousand dollars to cover the work for this. And this is a non-budgeted item, so it will need to come from, excuse me, the fund balance.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
There was a citizen comment, or a public comment regarding the issue of a non-budgeted item. For the purpose of the council and the public...
For the purposes of the council and the public, obviously, the North Loop has been on the radar for, I'll just say fifty years. And the, this city only learned this year, once the decision was made earlier this year, that this project was finally funded. So now that it's funded, it starts to trigger the process to get it going. So everything from the soil samples and everything else that's involved to get the road now built, because you are now in a process of they're out there doing the surveys, they're out there appraising properties. So all that kicked off, if you will. So because so much time's passed, some of these, you know, when, when you get to the, the database issue, you know, obviously, all these years have elapsed. So there was a commitment on behalf of the city to, you know, fund a portion of getting the road built. You know, ultimately, I tell folks, the city, by the time it's done, will have paid, eh, give or take about a million dollars for a ten million dollar road. But this is part of the process. So there's no way to know, you know, that this was gonna come up because until all the votes from the different boards, GDOT and GTIV and all those others said, boom, the project's going. So just wanted to explain to the public why it says it's a non-budgeted item. As far as your contingency, the council did have a contingency, and throughout the year, you all have spent that contingency, I think it was give or take about ninety-six thousand dollars. So as the council's taken actions throughout the year, so the contingency's gone, if you will. Contingency, of course, things I'll just throw out, you know, you had to pay a, you know, Judge Protem, things like that, that just aren't budgeted that are gonna come up. So that contingency's gone.
I think we all knew that some of these things were coming on, on board, but when it started in nineteen sixty-five, then it just kept going on and on and on. The question was, we knew it, we just didn't know when. And that's, that's the biggest conflict of all this.
Gotta do it.
Gotta do it. We gotta do it, one at a time, if we will, please.
The second item is the database. GDOT has informed the city that the pavement surfaces that were overlaid since the first survey in nineteen eighty-eight will have to be resurveyed, and the field data from that will need to be updated into the database. This is an engineering service proposal with Keck and Wood for that service and the amount of twenty-five thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars to perform these services. And again, it's a non-budgeted item that will need to be paid from the fund balance.
I'm just an old fat football coach.
You said it, we didn't.
Yeah, I'm not, and I am. But we got a road setting out somewhere, and we're gonna build another road to that road. So why do we have to go back and measure anything?
Has to do with everything from elevations of the road, drainage of the road, the grade of the road...
All you have to do is go back in and change the elevation standards because it's already there. And most people, these engineers that we keep getting, most people, those guys understand what it takes to go from an inch and a quarter to an inch and three quarters or two inches. You know, I just don't understand why we have to continue. Next thing we're gonna do is go back and do the Indiana Bat Study.
Well, the simple...
I'm sorry, I'm on a tirade.
The simple, the simple answer is GDOT has mandated that we do these. So if we don't do them, the road stops. That's, 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 that's what they've told us at our meeting. What it says here all, all, all sounds real nicey-nice.
And it sounds like they're the, from the email, the answered email today, is that they are the ones that did the surfacing last, so they know when it was done.
Mm-hmm.
And that's why this is getting required again.
Yeah, on, on, on your dime.
Which we agreed to.
Yes, fifty years ago.
The last item there is regarding pavement, and they also were, GDOT is also requiring a pavement evaluation report and pavement type selection report. This will involve them taking core samples of existing roads and determining what, what the, the condition of the, the roads are in and what the proper type of road bed would be required, whether it be asphalt or concrete. This is an engineering service proposal with ECS Southeastern LLC and the amount of eleven thousand, two hundred dollars for performing these services. And this is also a non-budgeted item, which will need to be paid from the fund.
Also mandated by GDOT. So I'm gonna make a motion that since GDOT requires these things for us to proceed with our north bypass, we spent twenty-two thousand on the utility engineering, and then we spent twenty-five to nineteen on updating the asphalt database, and we spent eleven thousand, two hundred on the pavement analysis, so we can move on with our north bypass.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded.
Read allegedly.
It has been properly moved and seconded that we will accept these bids for the North Loop project, for the utilities, the database, and pavement. All in favor? Raise your hand. All opposed? So it has been properly moved and seconded that we would do this.
I almost expected the council, the mayor protest, because he's like, well, since GDOT requires this, how about I make a motion? They pay for it. I almost, I was like, where's he going with this? He was drawing that out.
Yeah, GDOT, this is something we had to do, so...
I know.
You know, we, it's no point in arguing. We gotta do it, we gotta do it.
You're all night long.
All right, D is Parks, Recreation, and Leisure Services.
If you go home.
And Ms. Coleman is out sick, so Mr. Villanueva, you gonna handle this?
I, I think that this is a contract. The council has already approved awarding the bid to this company to complete the project.
Okay.
I have reviewed the contract that was presented to us. It appears to be in proper form, and you simply need to approve the contract that's before you.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
All right. It has been properly moved and seconded that we will accept the contract from Trailhead. So all in favor, raise your hand. Opposeds? All right, approved with four votes. Economic development for the main street.
I can, I can present that one also, and that is, the council is being asked to simply confirm the initial appointment of the Downtown Development Authority members as the inaugural board for the Villarica Convention and Visitors Bureau. The bylaws of that organization provide that from here on out, the members of the DDA will serve as the board of the CVB. And so you won't have to take action every year because it'll just be a recurring process. Whenever you put somebody on the DDA, then they become on the board of the CVB.
Move to approve the resolution.
Pardon?
Move to approve this resolution.
Thank you.
All in favor of this motion, raise your hand. All opposed? No? Okay, that's a four zero vote. All right, F is governing body. I propose this, so I guess I can handle this part, but as you all know, Portham North Avenue is being closed, and there's a portion about, with the expansion of the hospital, and we were looking in renaming that portion of the street, and we have a young man that's from Villarica that is made something of himself and did a lot, and he's giving back to the city in the name of Jay Crowder, who's a member of the Boston Celtics. So my suggestion was that we rename that little portion of the street, Jay Crowder, Street Lane, or whatever you want.
Did we talk to the people, did we talk to the people who live there, those two people?
I have not, but I can if there's...
No, I don't think, I just...
I, I know we haven't, I suggested to the mayor, I don't recall why, conflict, but I suggested that we go out, but the mayor's had too many funerals in her schedule lately, unfortunately.
I don't have a problem with it. I just, I, I think it'd be appropriate to talk to those folks.
Yeah, I intend to do it. I just brought it to the, the council to see, you know, the feedback from the council and the, the public as far as that's concerned, but, you know, I'll do it.
Madam Mayor, what I would suggest is, based on the will of the council, so whatever y'all decide, we can go out there, there's two, I did confirm, I, I know the question came up during the, the work session, there are two residential households. So, you know, the, the mayor and I can go out and knock on the doors, visit with them, and, and based on the will of the council, if that's where you wanna head, then at the same time that the city attorney writes up the paper for Lost Lane, we could write up the paperwork and have it at your next meeting for, for that as well.
All right.
Does that sound reasonable?
I think that'd be appropriate.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll just table that until we get, till we go out and talk to the residents if that's okay with the council.
Yeah, we do need to change the name because otherwise, there'll be this blank space between North Ave and North Ave, and...
Jump over.
Yeah, people will be confused.
Okay, all right.
One other thing we ought to do, along with visiting the actual residents out there, is check to see who actually owns that property to notify them as well as the people who are living in it. I, I don't know if the owners are living in the property or if it's tenants, but that's simp, that can be simply done off the tax records.
Yeah, I, I pulled that, I'll, I'll double-check that.
We can do that. It's Coors that you...
Not that easy.
Oh, it's you again.
Okay, we got...
You weren't taking oath?
He's already taking his oath.
He swears regularly.
We got a historic reservation, preservation commission, and Mr. Coors has shown an interest in being on that board, so you would like to, so is the, will the council that put Mr. Larry...
If he's already taking the, the oath...
He's already taking oath.
That's fine, you know, protect, even, well, yeah, I ain't gonna say nothing about his shirt. It ain't Georgia.
No, no, no action yet.
No action, no action, right, until we talk to the owners over there. Okay.
Make a motion, we accept Mr. Coors as, on the hysterical, I mean, historical preservation.
Okay, who's out seconding it.
All right, good.
All in favor?
Go home.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we will put Mr. Larry Coors on as, in the event that he is officially past the oath. Is there anything else to come before the council? Here and none other...
Not bad, forty minutes.
Here and none other, I get a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we will adjourn this meeting for November twenty sixteen, all in favor? Even the, the chief back there. Okay, all right.
Did he wake up?
Meeting is officially adjourned. Thank you all for your patience and, don't let this discourage, we will...